Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions on a finite resource. As always, Lord, I pray for all of our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you'll keep them safe and guide them, comfort them each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner White.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please. Roll call.
Good morning, Miller.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Merman.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta, good morning. Changes to the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. We do have some changes to the agenda, and I'll read those into the record. Starting on Agenda Page Six, Item E1, Application 20-0332, the applicant is requesting the application be continued to the October 13th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Moving to Agenda Page Nine, Item E12, this application's out of order, is being continued to October 13th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. On Agenda Page 11, Item G1, the applicant has withdrawn their request for oral argument, and the item will be heard on the consent agenda. And moving to Item M1, this is an off-the-agenda item. This will entail a presentation by the Hillsborough County Public Schools on the tentative five-year work plan. Commissioners, that concludes the agenda.
Move the changes.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Second by Commissioner White to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman, oh, sorry, Commissioner Kemp, to approve the change to the agenda. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Anyone having a B item, your items have been approved. Anyone having a B item, your item has been approved. Anyone wishing to testify before the board this morning, please stand, raise your right hand, and let the clerk swear you in.
Good morning. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Item E2 in the Agenda of Personal Appearance 20-0561 located at 8002 Anderson Road. The parcel's approximately a little bit over half an acre. It's located in the LI Light Industrial Plan category. It's a planned development. The existing use entitlement is for manufacturing uses, just a little bit over 28,000 square feet. Commissioners, this is a change to request a slight increase in the impervious surface from 75% to 85%, a reduction in front setback from 20 to 30 feet, and also to request that the parking be in accord with the Land Development Code requirements. It doesn't entail any additional entitlements. What it entails is opening up the area where the building actually can be allocated on the site. Staff is recommending approval subject to conditions.
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant present? Mr. Moreta, is the applicant there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can't hear the applicant.
Now? Okay. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Richard Claybrook with Claybrook Engineering, and I'm here as to support the application. We have negotiated an agreement with the planning and zoning, and we are in agreement. So I'm here to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant waves rebuttal time. Thank you very much. What's your pleasure?
Move, Pergo.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item E2. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners. This brings it to Item E3. This is a personal appearance 20-0641. It's a, an amendment, proposed amendment to a planned development, approved in 2005. It was recently approved for a major modification for an affordable housing development entailing 120 multifamily units. The applicant is proposing to change the clusters that are allowed for the density, or the dwelling clusters, from 14 to 16. They're also requesting to amend access related to Lemons', well, the primary access for the site is off of Lemon Street. They're asking to eliminate a requirement to make a road improvement for a connection on Giddings Street. The primary issue that staff has dealt with in the evaluation of this, because we felt the multifamily cluster was a change that was almost inconsequential to the plan, but the main thrust of our evaluation was around the access and the cross-access evaluation. And I'm going to let Brian Grady walk through the various steps of that evaluation and our conclusion. Staff is recommending approval in part, subject to conditions, and that condition that is being contested by the applicant is related to the access improvement on Giddings.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services Division. Regarding the access to the site, this is the aerial of the site. It's primary access to Lemon Avenue on the eastern boundary. Existing staff, it's part of evaluating this, evaluated. Staff evaluate as part of the original, most recent zoning modification, as part of this modification, opportunities for connectivity for this project. As noted, its primary access is off Lemon's Avenue. You'll note along the western boundary, there's two undeveloped, vacant right-ofways, Giddings, Giddings, which street is right here, and then another undeveloped right-ofway down here. There is existence of wetlands along this boundary, although not high quality. It does create some issues, and so from staff's perspective, did not have an objection with not making connection here as long as Giddings roads connection was provided. But here's a little bit more detail on those connections. Well, to the south is a railroad track. As noted, to the southern boundary, there's a railroad track. There's the issue, this southern, not to Mango Street right-ofway, there's existing wetlands there, so there's some challenges with making the connection there. And then the preferred secondary access would again be to Giddings Street. We have proposed a condition, because the applicant, we'll hear from the applicant regarding issues regarding getting the street right-ofway. We have, that there's potential for the adjacent property owner to requesting a vacation of that right-ofway. Our conditional approval is, we have a condition that allows if, before the project gets through site development review, the Giddings Street right-ofway is vacated, then that they would not have to make that connection to that right-ofway. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. I see no question at this time. Is applicant available?
Nurse. For the record, I'm Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway, Suite 214 Tampa 33618. There we go, sideways. Appreciate working with staff, Commissioners. With me this morning is Mr. Jeremy Couch, Tampa Design, also Ms. Brienne Hefner, Southport Development. Southport Development was approved for a major mod in 19, excuse me, 2019, for 120 units. We received the density bump-up under your Affordable Housing Development Program for the infill density, and the Affordable Housing bump up to 12 units per acre. So our intention all along was to have 120 affordable housing units. We have gone through a number of iterations, a number of reviews. We appreciate working with staff. We have no opposition. We have strong support. However, we had thought that we would be through this process by now. Unfortunately, with the COVID delays, we found ourselves in a position where we have all construction plans approved, but we are pending a right-ofway vacation that will not be scheduled until sometime November, December. Mr. Grady is correct, and the report states that we did have a condition on that major mod request for a condition of approval, and that was for a connection to Giddings right-ofway, which is here. This was the plan that we filed, or the PRS that we filed, gosh, I want to say back in March, Commissioners. And this PRS was filed for relief, because after detailed engineering and construction cost estimates, it became rather apparent quickly that this project was way too expensive under the budget, and unnecessary improvements would essentially threaten the viability and opportunity to construct this affordable housing development. Our clients have worked with Cheryl Howell for the past year. I've worked on this project for almost two years. This is Mango Terrace. It is fully funded. We are ready to go. Unfortunately, the Giddings right-ofway apparently has an encroachment of a parking lot that the church of the prior owner, not the current church ownership, but a parking lot has been partially constructed in this right-ofway of Giddings. We are proposing improvements to both Lemon Avenue, constructing sidewalks, and re-milling portions of Lemon Avenue all the way up to MLK. We also have constructed and proposed as part of our development plan a sidewalk all the way across Giddings right-ofway, all the way to the west to Broadway, and then extending all the way up Broadway to MLK. So we have extensive sidewalk connectivity. I might also add, Commissioners, unfortunately, we have been advised recently that we are only funded for 94 of the 120 units. So this project now completely eliminates this eight-unit building, four up, four down, and also this eight-unit building, four units up, four units down. This further complicates the funding dynamics. Our client is in a position of having to make trade-offs. If we are forced to construct the Giddings right-ofway improvements all the way across in the church property, we would be in a position that something has to give on this project. That is why we put so much emphasis on upgrading Lemon, as well as extensive sidewalk improvements all the way up to MLK, north on Lemon, as well as on Broadway. The church has representatives here that they'll address and discuss with you those options and why they have filed that right-ofway vacation petition. Unfortunately, Commissioners, that right-ofway vacation action will not come to you until, my guess is November, December. We have to be under construction for this project by end of the year. We have all permits, SWIFM, Hillsborough County, road construction. We just have to get this final approval to initiate this most worthy project that we've all been working so hard on. You can see that if this connection was made, we will now have a direct through traffic from Lemon all the way to Broadway. We think that introduces perhaps an unsafe condition, where we'll have parks and playgrounds and children playing and walking throughout this community. We have extensive sidewalk connectivity throughout this internal development, as well as, I mentioned, all along Lemon, all across this Giddings right-ofway to be vacated, and again, all the way up north to MLK. So what we had hoped would be 120-unit affordable housing development, we now find ourselves at 104. The one condition that allows the eight up, eight down is critical, because those construction costs for the smaller buildings were very high. So now we're doing a few larger buildings. Ironically, the smaller buildings, the 16-unit or the eight-unit buildings, those are the ones that leave here and here that no longer exist. Those will be removed from the plan. So this budget has been impacted substantially. If we implement and agree to condition 11, Commissioners, it's going to probably delay this project, if not prohibit the project from moving forward. It pains me to say that. I have representatives from Southport who will speak to this project funding levels and their opinion on moving forward. We have worked so hard with staff. We appreciate your approval. We know this board encourages and supports affordable housing. We're just trying to find a way to get this project across the finish line. I'm going to have Jeremy Couch describe some off-site condition improvements first, and then Ms. Brienne Hefner from Southport Development that will follow. Thank you, Commissioners.
Clerk, how much more time do we have for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'm showing just under nine minutes.
Okay.
The Civil 17937 Hunting Bull, sir. So the, the unapproved right-ofway in question is a real disaster to construct, to put it lightly. This is the area, you can see on the right-hand side of the telephone pole, this is the right-ofway. It's a low-lying land. Immediately adjacent to it is a wetland area. The drainage runs through this right-ofway and into the wetlands. There's no room anywhere in this right-ofway to construct retention, and it's actually lower than our property. So what we're going to have to do is build walls on both sides of this right-ofway, elevate the road in the air, so that way the drainage can work and drain back to the site. Areas where we had parks and green space planned, we're going to have to rededicate that for retention. I mean, conservatively, I think the estimate of cost of this small piece of right-ofway is between $400,000 and $600,000. So it's going to be a road to nowhere. It's going to connect to our parking lot, go through the parking lot, and go to Lemon Avenue. My concern is that people in the area are going to use this as a cut-through to go to Wawa's, and they're going to flip through, and they're going to haul tail through this parking lot. It's only 100 units. There's going to be kids out there playing, and all of a sudden, it's a, it's a, it's a public right-ofway through a parking lot, back to a public right-ofway. I mean, the potential is just, it's really bad. And I think the people that are going to lose are the apartment complex. I mean, they have an opportunity to have a small community at the, at the end of a road, and it's a safe community. The church, which will talk, has huge plans to expand in this area and do a lot of outreach. But if we build this road, and we have these walls, there are two properties that are going to be bifurcated. It just, it looks good on paper, but I don't know that it makes sense in the real world. You can see the trees we're going to have to wipe out. I mean, it's an absolute disaster. And I'm going to let Brienne speak. Thank you.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? Brienne Hefner, 5403 West Gray Street, Tampa, Florida, 33609. I made notes, so this will either go very, very well or very poorly, so I apologize in advance. A lot of friendly faces in the room and on the screen, and it's nice to see all, everyone, Commissioners. Thanks for having us and allowing us to speak. I want to give a big shout out to this Hillsborough County staff, especially Cheryl Howell for helping us with our affordable housing project. I'm going to say affordable housing a lot, and I apologize as well, but this Mango Terrace is an affordable housing complex, as my previous team members have said, 104 units. Southport is a Tampa-based affordable housing developer. This is our backyard, and we love doing business in Hillsborough County. Statewide, we have 77 properties, over 9,500 units. Hillsborough County, nine properties, just over 1,000 units. This would add to our portfolio here in our local jurisdiction, and we're pretty excited about that. As the gentleman before me have spoke, we have a finite resource. We were one of the lucky ones that won sale ELI, 4% tax credits from Florida Housing Finance Corporation. In that, you have a very fixed finite budget. As mentioned as well, we were anticipating building 120 units, because we got the affordable housing boost. Unfortunately, construction costs have gone up about 25% over the last couple of years, which hurts the wallet and affects the budget. Having to spend $400,000 to $600,000 on this see-through road, or this cut-through road, would be detrimental to the property. Also, as mentioned, this is a family development. There will be a lot of children who will be living in the neighborhoods in the ones, twos, and three-bedroom units. Our fear is folks using MLK to cut through on Giddings and run through the parking lot of our development. Even with speed bumps or speed humps, it will still include extra traffic that we don't need. Also, we're on a time crunch. This darn COVID has messed us up. So we need to be closed by the end of this year. Unfortunately, with the conditions number 11 and 12, that means we would have to wait for the road vacation from the church. Unfortunately, that not occurring until November or December means we cannot even turn in our building permits. Again, you have to have site plan approval in order to turn in building permits, and that's what we're most terrified of right now. I don't need to go into the stats of how important affordable housing is in Hillsborough County. I have plenty of them written down. I'll save those for another day, since I know I'm running out of time. But I do want to say that affordable housing is a necessity in Hillsborough County. And to quote Commissioner Kimberly Overman, who happened to be at my last project's opening, Laburnum Gardens, 81 units in Valrico, "In order to build a strong economy, people need a place to lay their heads at night, so they can take care of their families and take care of their lives. That foundation is key to a successful community and economy." So we are pleading, begging, grovelling for the approval of our PRS with removing conditions number 11 and 12.
How much time is left, please?
Two minutes, 57 seconds.
All right, Commissioners, I'll just say this, and then I'll wait for rebuttal opportunity. I know some supporters are here, the church representatives. Even the staff report states and acknowledges that the 120 units applied for is under the trip generation PMP hour threshold levels that require secondary access for planned unit development of this nature. So not only did it not trigger that requirement in the major mod process, now we have reduced from 120 to 104 units. We refiled those trip generation standard sheets back to the staff for ITE review. That impact is now further diminished based upon the reduction of trips from 120 to 104 units. So the necessity of that roadway connection, which we just referenced, is further, I think, not necessary based upon those trip generation rates and the safety concerns, and no question the cost constraints. I'll yield my time to the supporters, and then we'd be happy to have any questions. Everybody, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have one person that was signed up, I think, as a proponent, David Wright.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is David Wright, President of PSP Companies. Our address is PO Box 1016, Tampa, Florida, 33601, and I have been sworn in. We are in support of this PRS, and actually also in support of the church not having to connect to Giddings Street. I'm in the process of completing the right-ofway vacation application on behalf of the church, and we're just working to get the signatures. And as soon as we have the signatures from the adjacent property owners, we plan to submit that application to request the vacation of Giddings Street and the street to the north. The purpose for the vacation is, as was previously mentioned, the church plans to follow through with a unified site plan, so that they can create a facility to have more outreach to the community there. And I'd like to point out again, as was previously stated, it's unimproved right-ofway. It's never developed as it was originally intended years ago. Also, as was previously mentioned, affordable housing is much needed in this county, and so we would request your approval of this PRS with the conditions requested by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent? So anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant? Wave your time. The rebuttal time?
If I could just make one comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, again, was to allow for...
Mr. Swin, what are you rebutting? Nobody's talking.
Just wanted to state that Mr. Tom Elton of Bay Life Church was supposed to be on this morning. I think he's having difficulty accessing. Bay Life Church is our neighbor. They have a number of paper streets throughout their project, their property. They do not wish to have this through traffic either. However, they are willing to have cross-access connection in terms of pedestrian, and they have encouraged and allowed us to have that five-foot-wide sidewalk all the way through that south property. When that right-ofway petition comes to this board, we would certainly reserve an easement for that sidewalk, so that connectivity can remain. Commissioners, I would only ask to implement our request, if possible, that Condition 10 be amended, so that it only states applicants shall be allowed one access to Lemon Avenue. Condition 11 would be removed in its entirety, and Condition 12, the initial sentence up to the applicant will be required, be struck, as well as the last sentence, beginning with if the Giddings Street right-ofway is not vacated. With those changes, and we are humbly asking you for this request, because I've worked so hard on this, as the team members have, this is a good project. The church is offering a number of social service programs that dovetail perfectly to this affordable housing community. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. And I thank you for the presentation. It's always interesting being quoted in somebody else's presentation, but I do have a passion, obviously, for affordable housing, and these units are needed. I do have a couple of questions. While I have been a strong proponent of having cross-access and additional access, in this particular case, it does appear as though putting in the access on Giddings as a roadway may not necessarily achieve the project, or should possibly cause some difficulty in the project. The last sentences that were mentioned by Mr. Horner made me wonder regarding Item 12, regarding the substandard lane on Lemon Avenue, previously in the document, it made references of improving Lemon Avenue, at Lemon Avenue, and because it is substandard, and it is the access to water, wastewater. Is, is that access going to be improved for the length of the property to Broadway is one of the questions I, I'd like to get an answer to. Otherwise, I'm, I'm happy with the request to strike Item 11.
Mr. Overman, you asked that question.
Mr. Horner would probably, well, they can make the call.
Commissioner Overman, thank you. This is a picture of the Lemon Avenue right-ofway. If you can see where the vehicle is, that's actually where the Wawa's improvement ended. So it is our proposal, we've communicated with Public Works, DESS, we've worked through fix. We're going to rip up the sidewalk, put a new sidewalk in. We're going to resurface the entire road all the way north to MLK. We're going to stop at the improvement near the light where the Wawa's is, because it's, it's brand-new asphalt. It's only, you know, less than, less than maybe a year, year and a half old, so there's probably no reason really to... to rip that brand-new asphalt up. But we're going to tie into that. So, this whole corridor all the way to the southern terminus is going to look like a brand-new road. It's going to have good, safe, deft access, and that's what we've worked with Mike Williams and Ben Niesling of DESS with. Thank you.
So, what I'm hearing is there will be sidewalks on both sides of the road and new pavement all the way the length of the property?
On the east side of the road, Commissioner, it's hard to tell in this picture, but the sidewalk terminates at about here. But between those two roadwork signs, there is a significant drop-off in the right-of-way there. There's actually bollards protecting vehicles or like a, like a really big fence post protecting vehicles from falling off in that area. So, the sidewalk, that's why the sidewalk ends there. On our west side is going to be the main thoroughfare from our folks walking to the north. We'll have, immediately off the picture, on the bottom right, there's an, there's an intersection for a subdivision, I think about 50-unit subdivision. We're going to have connectivity across the street there, and then on the west side, we're going to rebuild the sidewalk all the way north.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Of course, we all want affordable housing project. I mean, and connectivity has been a big goal of this board and our county because everyone complains about traffic congestion, and there is no magic silver bullet to traffic congestion. The answer is going to have to come in pieces, and one of the pieces is connecting the grid and giving people options on our, to our traffic congestion. And that is the way that good planning will help to solve our traffic congestion. So, everybody wants to connect the grid. Everybody wants those options when they're driving around. Everybody agrees that's the, that's part of the solution, but nobody wants the grid connected through their own neighborhood or their own project. And as I hear, the biggest argument here, again, as always, is the applicant doesn't want cut-through traffic. And as always, they talk about the children, and in, that's just always what we hear. That's what is always presented. They don't want truck, cut-through traffic. I think our staff has worked really hard with the applicant to make this project work and to find ways for connectivity. They've, they've agreed that in this corner, there's wetlands, and in this corner, there's other challenges. So, they're only requesting two connection points, and, and the applicant wants that limited to one, so they're effectively a dead-end cul-de-sac with no cut-through traffic and no connectivity. I, I think the staff has worked really hard to add condition 12 that says if the right-of-way is vacated, then condition 11 will be void. So, I, I think they've bent over backwards. Our staff has to make our goal of connectivity work as much as possible with our goal of affordable housing. And with that, I'll move the item with the staff conditions.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I am interested in actually having those conditions met, but I'm not to the extent that affordable housing financing doesn't work and the project fails before the end of the year. Is there anyone that can attest to the financing stats that would verify that, in fact, the project would not be sustained should we make these conditions stand? So, I do, I do hear that the applicant has considered putting in, you know, the sidewalk access to Broadway, so there's a walkable or bikeable method to get out of the property in lieu of a full road. But I also know how critically important it is when we are 54,000 units short of affordable housing in Hillsborough County. So, there, and it isn't a huge road, and it's not a huge project, but I would like to find out if there's anyone possibly that can help us understand why the project would not be able to be completed, or at least open, by the end of the year should this project, should this requirement stand?
Yes, of course. That's an excellent question. And yes, the staff has worked with us a lot on this, and it's been greatly appreciated, and especially with the affordable housing bonuses and all that kind of things that we've gotten. So, yes, if the biggest holdup is that you, we may not turn in our building permits without final site approval. So, if in condition 12 where it says if they don't make us, if they don't, if they do get the right-of-way, then we don't have to do it, cool, but we won't know that until this November or December. I know that we do have building permit expedition in Hillsborough County, which is wonderful. However, I have to have all permits in hand before I may close. So, as you can imagine, if I don't get approval from the vacation until October, November, December, and I can't turn in my building permits, then I am behind the eight ball, of course. It would effectively require us to request an extension from Florida Housing. Ray DeBuke, who is the current Vice Chair of Florida Housing Finance Corporation Board of Directors, is adamantly against giving extensions. He wants developers to do what they should do and get out of the way and get these things closed, but he does not also understand how long the process in a lot of the municipalities takes. Yes, it could be a detriment to the property on a timing standpoint and a losing of finance standpoint.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you rec-
Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you. Commissioner Overman brings up some important points. I want to ask a couple of questions, one to the Mr. Horner and the other to Adam Gormley. Basically, what you're asking for is to approve this project without condition 11 and 12. Is that correct?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. Michael Horner, for the record. We are asking for condition 10 to be amended for only the access to Lemon. We are asking for the deletion entirely of condition 11 that requires the construction of Giddings Cross Street. And 12, we are asking to amend, removing the first sentence to the applicant will be required, starting the condition at that point, and then deleting the last sentence, if the Getting Street right-of-way is not vacated, are the changes we're seeking. As Mr. Couch testified, this improvement would be $350,000 to $600,000. Would have to start over from scratch on those construction plans. Physically, they're not sure that can be accommodated with the permits. We would have to start essentially over and come back to you, my guess is in the spring, and by then it's too late. The right-of-way vacation, obviously, is going to be November, December, and clearly too late to get building permits. So, I might also add there, I just got your approval. We're thankful for that of the Aldi Grocery Store on MLK, just at the north side of Lemon, south of MLK, west of the Wawa. So, that new sidewalk section that Mr. Couch talked about will be a direct connection right to the back door of Aldi Grocery Store, which is 20,000 square feet, I might add. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Can I also ask, is, is there transit in the area?
There is transit available on MLK.
Okay. Then to Adam Gormley. Adam, so given what you've heard and all this testimony, and the fact that if we approved the project the way it is in our book today, without the other conditions that they're proposing, that they, we would, in essence, lose this project. So, did you all take this into consideration? I'm sure you talked to the applicant, and he relayed all this information to you. And why did you feel a need to continue to stick with the recommendations that you've made?
Commissioner, we saw this and recognized the challenges that were associated with the project and from the affordable housing standpoint and their financing considerations. We thought this was a significant enough issue that we needed to bring this, get some guidance from the board on how they ultimately saw this, this connection, as Mr. Horner indicated that there is a pending or being prepared vacating request. While this request by the applicant doesn't preclude the use of this road, this, this- Sorry?
Excuse me, who's that talking? Who is that talking? Continue, Mr. Gormley.
Sorry, sir. This is James Brewer. That's Glenn Register, one of my associates that's, that's in the room. Are we having an issue, Chris or Glenn?
James, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, one of our laptops is experiencing technical difficulties. You should be able to continue, though.
Okay. Chairman, before we move forward, can I take this opportunity to identify two call-in users that have joined recently? The first call-in user is area code 813-766. Can you identify yourself, please? Area code 813-766, can you identify yourself, please? I think it's Suzie Vega. Okay. I have another call-in user, area code 8262352. Can you identify yourself, please? Sorry, go ahead.
If I may, Suzie Vega was the applicant for item E1, has been continued to October 13th. So, if that's the item, she's on the line for her item, has been acted on for today.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and mute both of those callers, since they are not muting themselves and they have disrupted the call a few times. Ms. Vega, hopefully you heard that, and your item has been continued. Chairman, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gormley, continue, please.
While, while not requiring the connection doesn't necessarily preclude the use of that as a roadway, it was an existing condition, and the impacts, while, while the planned number of units have changed, the, the actual number approved, I believe, is staying the same. Essentially, we didn't see the need for removing that connection. We did recognize that, again, there's some financial challenges, and we did structure condition 12 to include the pedestrian walkway, which I believe the applicant is still committing to provide, and, and the conditions that Mr. Horner read would, would achieve that if the board was inclined to leave that as a pedestrian versus vehicular connection. But essentially, we, again, we did recognize the challenges to the project and the costs that are associated with this. We erred on the side of maintaining the connectivity that was in the PD that exists based on the last board approval.
Okay, so the changes he's recommending, I'm sorry, in number 10, that was to, a change to Lemon Street. So, are you against that or for that, Adam?
Well, Commissioners, it's just, it's simply a question of whether one or two access points are sufficient for, for this. If the board was inclined to provide for one access point to Lemon Avenue, one consideration is that, that the, that access connection to Giddens doesn't preclude emergency access in the event that Getting, Getting Street does not get vacated. But, you know, to achieve what the applicant is asking for, yes, that, what Mr. Horner read would achieve that.
Okay, so I'm going to make a substitute motion. I think this project is critically important, and to lose the financing, I, I think that this is just going to be, you know, a case-by-case basis on the connectivity where I think in this case, you know, I just think to be fair and to help provide something that's really been an important goal for this commission, I'm going to make a substitute motion. Yes.
Before you make your substitute motion, can I ask a question?
Sure. Oh, sure.
Mr. Gormley, is there any way that your staff and the applicant could step outside and work this out and bring it back? So, we won't have, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know-
Willing to do that. I will say that, really, the issue is, is building a vehicular connection to Giddings Street or building only a pedestrian five-foot sidewalk connection. If, if the board's inclined to, to support the, the pedestrian connection only at this time, the conditions that Mr. Horner read were clear enough that we can make that change. So-
Let's, let's do this. Let's do this.
More, I think, Mr. Horner, the applicant has, has laid it out.
Okay, Mr. Gormley. Hold on, Mr. Gormley. Commissioner Merman, would you, would you be inclined for that if I asked Commissioner Smith to withdraw?
Pedestrian only at this time. There will still be a future discussion, and if you draw, it would come to the board about the status of Getting Street. The difference would be who would construct it if, in fact, it's deemed necessary to maintain as a right-of-way in the future.
Okay. Mr. Gormley, can you hear me?
Sir.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, if I ask Commissioner Smith to withdraw her motion and have staff with Mr., with the applicant step outside and try to work this out and bring it back to us later on the meeting, Mr. Smith, are you willing to do that?
I will hear whatever they bring back, but I won't support the project without at least two access points, as, as they already worked out with staff. So-
So, you're now willing to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion if, if you think that another half hour will bring something different back, but I'm gestating.
I understand your statement, but let's try to give them an opportunity to work this out, because I do understand the mere fact of what you're saying. This is affordable housing, something we talk about constantly, 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 and I hate to see them lose this, but, you know, if they can work it out and, and we all can be satisfied with it, I think that's something we at least give them the opportunity to do. So, Commissioner Smith has withdrawn her motion, so staff are going to temporarily pass E3, step outside with Mr. Horner, his people, and try to work something out and bring it back to us. Is that okay? Understand?
Sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Who I want to call on now?
Mr. Moreta is coming.
Mr. Moreta, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners. Since that item is being tabled at this point, we'll move to item E4, which is personal appearance 20-0647, located at the southwest corner of Falkenburg Road and Camden Road, Field Parkway. Commissioners, this is a pretty straightforward request to modify parcel E of a planned development. That parcel, right now, permits townhomes, and the request is to convert the townhome units to multifamily. In addition to that, the applicant is essentially asking for an increase in height. We'll move the maximum height up to 47 feet in three stories. Right now, the maximum height is 35 feet in two stories. I believe Mr. Brian Grady is going to walk us through the site plan evaluation that the staff went through to arrive at our compatibility evaluation. We are recommending approval with conditions, and I'll turn it over to Brian to walk through the spacing and is being maintained, and the buffering is being maintained on the site plan inclusive of the changes. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services Division. There, um, this is the area of the proposed change where they're going from townhomes and multifamily. With respect to self-dex, I would note that the height they're requesting is permitted elsewhere within the project, so that actually the height increase would be consistent with other multifamily areas in the project. I will note that the parcel to the west is all under the same ownership, so this is going to be extension of multifamily development permitted here on the west- on the western boundary, along the southern boundary. Along the eastern boundary and north, there's an existing retention pond to provide setbacks along here and also additional easements and retention along the northern boundary. They didn't, the applicant along the southern boundary did increase, they agreed to a 50-foot setback and type A screening along that boundary. Based on that and with the existing setbacks of 35 feet, there's 85 feet between the buildings. I would note under the two to four, under this requirement of two-foot setback where every one foot is structured out of 20 feet, the code required 50 feet is 54 feet of separation between the buildings, so they're meeting that requirement. So based on those evaluations, staff did find the height increase appropriate and is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant? Is the applicant here?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir, I've been sworn. Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa 33602.
Okay, so you have 15 minutes.
Okay, well, I won't need that certainly, but we're seeking a minor modification to allow the conversion of 24 townhome units out of a 514 unit project from townhomes to multifamily. The only distinction in your code between a townhome and multifamily is that there's a platting requirement for townhomes. The townhome requirement was not imposed by the Board of County Commissioners nor staff when we, under the original rezoning, that was just voluntary. That was just where the developer thought the project was headed. Since then, the development and marketing scheme has changed. So what Brian indicated to allow increase in height, we've agreed to set back the southern boundary, the building setback from 20 to 50 feet. So there's additional screening. So in any event, it's become compatible. And as you saw, as you saw, wrapped around on the east and northern boundaries, retention pond. So we'd appreciate your consideration and approval. Any questions, I'll certainly try and answer them.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up. But is there anyone, anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Good morning.
Hello.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, my name is Miranda Sunquist and I actually live in Magnolia Park West, which is the neighborhood that wraps around the retention pond. And none of us really knew that they were actually going to be building back there. We thought it was going to be staying just like conservation area and no one in my neighborhood knew until we received this letter about this meeting. So I was just coming to see what was going on and it looks like they're trying to build a lot higher than one story. And a lot of us have our houses that back up to this pond, so they will be looking directly into our houses. It's kind of uncomfortable. So I do oppose building higher. Other than that, yeah, I just, I oppose the higher build because I live there and I've lived there for six years and, yeah, that's it. Sorry for my stumbling. This is my first time doing something like this.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone else wishing to speak as an opponent? Close the public hearing. Applicant, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that this property's been zoned for a number of years for the 24 townhomes. And Ms. Sunquist apparently lives to the east, if I'm understanding her, and there's 163-foot separation between our buildings, which is very significant, plus the retention pond. So that about sums it up. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Members, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
What's your back, Commissioner Merman?
Second.
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 Second by Commissioner Overman, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, anyone wishing, Commissioner Smith, your hands up. What's, you're not using your hand indicator?
Yeah, I've used my hand indicator.
Not working.
Okay, it's up. Anyway, I'd like to ask the applicant, Mr. Bentley. You say there's 168 feet. Does that include the retention pond? Or how much, how far is it to the residents that the citizen was concerned about? Will your buildings actually be able to see into their yards or pools or anything else they have going on?
Hi, Commissioner. If you look at page three of the staff report in the first paragraph, it says, quote, "Townhomes to the east are located approximately 143 feet from the common property line with an intervening stormwater pond. This results in a distance of approximately 163 feet between buildings because of the 20-foot setback on our property." So it's 163 feet between buildings.
Anything further, Commissioner Smith? Okay, Commissioner Merman, you recognized?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Okay, seen it for the heads. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item E4. See the further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E5, personal appearance 20-0655. This is located on the northwest corner of Sims Road, Sims Lake Drive. Commissioners, this is a mixed-use planned development. The planned development has a commercial pod, parcel A, that permits 40,000 square feet of general commercial uses. This proposal to specifically modify standards that will be applicable to an automated car wash entail reducing the setback for the structure from 30 to 10 feet, architectural standards. Our staff reviewed this, felt it was compatible and consistent with the intent of planned development, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Is applicant here?
Commissioners, this is David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street.
Have you been sworn in?
I'm the director of zoning and development for.
Have you been, have you been sworn in, Mrs. Smith?
Been sworn.
Okay, proceed. You have 15 minutes, sir. You have not been sworn?
He has not been sworn.
Okay, please swear, ma'am.
Morning, sir. Do you swear, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have 15 minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant. This is a fairly straightforward request. As indicated by staff. Excuse me. As indicated by staff, this is a mixed-use PD. The corner parcel is the commercial portion of the property. The subject site is the corner of Sims Lake and Sims Road. It's for an automated car wash, which means it's fully automated. There's no hand washing, there's no activity providing additional services. This site is zoned for CG uses. It can be much more intense uses on the site than proposed. The request is to reduce the setback on Sims Lake and Sims Road in order to provide a much more efficient design and also provide for opportunity for moving the car wash tube along Sims Road with the vacuum area in the back. This operation works eight to eight. There is no activity outside or any noise that would be experienced by this. The particular development plan. Get you oriented. Here we go, if you can see it. This is the last parcel to be developed, right here on the corner. We have 400 feet to the nearest residential structures to our east. There's 300 feet to the north and there's also an intervening utility area. There are architectural features that have been proposed that will also enhance the look along Sims Drive. By approving this setback reduction, it allows us to locate the kiosk in a most efficient manner. The use could otherwise go there, but the aesthetic benefits of moving the building closer to Sims Road and creating the circulation pattern are positive for both the community and the operational aspects of the use. I'm here to answer any questions. We do have representatives of the developer here if there are any questions for them.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Close the public hearing. Applicant, wave your rebuttal time.
Move the item.
Move the.
What's that, Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman, I believe that's who it was?
Yes.
Seeing no hands for discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to item E6, personal appearance 20-0656. This is, this is located in general vicinity, east of Brandon Boulevard, west of South Lithia Pinecrest, specifically on the intersection of Marguerite and Mason Street. Commissioners, this is a pretty straightforward request on a parcel that's 1.93 acres. It's a request to modify the planned development site plan. It's a reduction from 38 multifamily units to 24 townhomes. And what's really triggering this is the additional of two emergency access points to the site plan. And they're also slightly organizing the layout and the clusters of the structures on the building. Staff has reviewed this and we found it to be consistent and compatible with the original intent of the planned development and we are recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is applicant here?
Been sworn in.
Have you been sworn in?
She has not been sworn in.
No, sir.
Please swear in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good morning. You have 15 minutes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Tu. My office address is 14031 North Del Mayberry Highway, Tampa, Florida 33618. I'm here representing the applicant, Frank DeBose. As Mr. Moreta said, the petition, PRS 20-0656, is a minor modification to the approved PD 18-0532. It's to reduce the maximum number of units from 38 multifamily units to a maximum of 24 townhome units. In addition, the applicant is proposing to widen the access point on Margaret Street and provide emergency access to facilitate fire truck movement on site. As Mr. Moreta said, the project consists of seven vacant parcels totaling 1.93 acres in size. The site is located south of East Brandon Boulevard and west of South Lithia Pinecrest Road at the intersection of South Margaret Street and Mason Street. The parcels are zoned PD with a future land use of R6. To elaborate briefly on the proposed three minor modifications to the PD, one is to allow three separate buildings with a total of eight townhome units at each building with 24 units in total with additional parking spaces and open space community area. Two is to widen the primary access to South Margaret Street, which will, which will allow for two lanes, which was approved by PD, which was approved by the PD with only one lane. And third is to add two emergency access points at the north and south ends of the project for fire truck access and movement. All agencies have reviewed the project and have no objections. We want to thank staff for their review. We concur with staff's finding and agree with all conditions of approval. We respectfully request the board's approval for this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item E6? As a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak on item 6 as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak on item 6 as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Seeing no speakers, applicant, wave your rebuttal time. Applicant waves rebuttal time. Commissioner Overman, you.
Move approval.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I was going to ask a question and do the same thing. So there is many comments within this application regarding the grand oaks that appear to be at the primary entrance to the project. And historically, what we have seen in so many developments is that, you know, the land's cleared and then houses or buildings or whatever go up and then we replant with other, other types of trees. I'm hoping that this could become a grand entrance and those trees will be maintained. But I wasn't sure, the way the language was in the item, that there was a strong adherence to maintaining those grand oaks. Can someone clarify that for me? Otherwise, I will move to approval.
Commissioners, this is Joe Moreta for the record. Condition number nine contains the protections that basically are in the Land Development Code to require the recognition of those grand oaks and have them labeled on the site plan and protected accordingly, you know, in accordance with the Land Development Code. And that will be done at the site engineering stage of this project if it's approved.
Okay, and maybe the applicant can give me a commitment to maintaining those grand oaks?
Yes, ma'am. We do commit to remaining those grand oaks. Like Mr. Moreta said, during site development, we will submit a tree survey to natural, natural resources for them to review. And upon review, upon approval, they will allow this site to be developed with oaks intact.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So I'll move approval.
What's about Commissioner Merman? I'm sorry, Commissioner Overman, who seconds?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp and Merman. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row. Excuse me, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to item E7, personal appearance 20-0658. Commissioners, this is an amendment to a planned development located 140 feet east of the intersection of South US Highway 41 and Sims Road. The project total is approximately 414 and a half acres. Commissioners, the planned development is, provides for two development options, the first of which, option one, is a mobile home park with 84 spaces. Option two permits general commercial and multifamilies divided up in three pods. The proposal is to modify the internal circulation, the configuration, the layout, including some slight adjustments in acreage to one of the pods and also increasing the square footage by 400 square feet from 6,600 square feet to 7,000 square feet. To add to the understanding and context for this, Mr. Israel Monsanto will walk you through where the changes in the site plan occur, including the circulation and the increase in acreage and the square footage amount. Thank you very much. We are recommending approval, subject to conditions.
Good morning, Israel Monsanto Development Services. The main changes in the PD plan, on your left, you will see current group PD plan. It has a track A, which is an internal circulation, which is the planned development into the residential portion and the non-residential portion. The changes mainly will, it will maintain the access from Sims Road and also US Highway 41. But the difference is that the driveway, the driveway connection will happen within the non-residential portion. The interconnectivity that's approved today will be maintained. Pedestrian here and full vehicular connection here. Parcel 2 is increasing slightly the square footage for the non-residential uses. And also parcel 1 is reconfigured to induce the track B, which is retention pond into the parcel 2. In general speaking, the non-residential will maintain the location on the southwest corner and the residential multifamily will be maintained on the east side. Those are basically the main changes.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant here?
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Horner, 14502 North Del Mayberry Highway, Tampa 33618, represent the applicant and builder. I think staff nailed it on the changes. Mr. Monsanto has been a pleasure to work with. We are essentially establishing a different driveway that allows for security for these 30 multifamily units on the north side. Increasing one of the commercial parcels by just 400 square feet. We're still maintaining all the cross-axis connectivity and pedestrian connectivity. We have actually extended this driveway further north. It's off this graphic. It's off this graphic for greater separation from the intersection. We have no objection support from staff. Ask for your approval today. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Seeing none, applicant waves his time. What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Obermann. Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
Oh, sorry. I forgot to take my hand down. My apologies.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E eight. It's a 1.54 acre parcel located at five oh five South Kings Avenue. It's a modification to modify the buffering and screening shown on the site plan to default to the Land Development Code requirements for buffering and screening. Commissioners, the Land Development Code buffering screening requirements are calibrated based on adjacent use. For example, if there was a commercial project next to a residential project, the commercial project would need to provide twenty-foot buffering and that buffering would also include vertical screening. What the applicant is proposing in this case is that this project simply be developed in accordance with the adopted standards in Land Development Code, which are primarily to enhance compatibility. I will let Brian Grady walk you through the staff, or excuse me, walk you through the site plan to show you exactly where those changes are occurring and how we arrived at our conclusion because we are recommending approval with conditions.
Good morning. Again, Brian Grady, Development Services Department. This is the aerial of the subject parcel that's associated with the subject application. Again, as Mr. Moreta indicated, the Land Development Code would affect the buffering and screening for compatibility purposes does not require buffering and screening when there are like land uses adjacent to it. And I'll just point out on this property and evaluating this, the only area to the south is a PD approved for medical office. The property itself is approved for medical office. To the east, this is approved for medical office. To the west, you've got Kings Avenue. And the north in this area is a multifamily. And so that area to the north is the only area that the code would require buffering and screening. And we will provide in buffering and screening in accordance with the code. Available for any questions.
Thank you. The applicant, Mr. Truett Gardner is here. Have you been sworn in, sir?
I have. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, sir. You have fifteen minutes.
Perfect. I'll take far less than that. And actually, Brian and Joe did a fantastic job. Just for clarity's sake, items E eight and E nine are linked. E eight is the northern parcel, which Mr. Grady was just showing. And then E nine is the parcel to the south. The developer of both of those is Herod Properties. You'll see on your, as far as the applicant, they're single purpose entities. For E eight, it's HHD Kings North LLC. And for E nine, it's HHD Brandon MV LLC. And these are medical office buildings. These sites are west of the Brandon Regional Hospital. And this was more of a timing issue than anything. The hope was to develop these at the same time, but they had difficulty getting the northern parcel under contract before the southern parcel. So we proceeded with the southern parcel first. That required us at the time, because of the use on the north, to have buffers. And then subsequently, we got the northern parcel under contract, rezoned it in December of 2018, which then took away the need to have that used-to-use buffer. But it was stated on the site plans. And so this is mainly just a cleanup effort to reduce the buffer because we now have a used-to-use that's similar. And it also allows us to take down the requirement of a masonry wall. And you will note on the site plans, there is connectivity between the northern and the southern parcels. So that's it. And I hope I'm not confusing matters by taking these two together. But I did want to point out to the board the linkage between the two, which I think tells the story of why this makes sense. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. But members, be aware of that we're going to stake rebuttals separately. We're on E eight at this particular point in time. Is there, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent on E eight? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant wave your time, rebuttal time?
Yes, I did.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to approve item E eight. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to E nine, personal appearance twenty dash zero six six zero. This takes us to five one five South Kings Avenue, a 31.1 acre parcel. The request is to modify the buffering and screen on the site plan and provide it default with the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code buffering and screening, as we noted, this is calibrated based on the adjacent use. When a similar use is adjacent, no buffering and screening is required. When the use intensity changes, then the buffering and screening also comes into effect and typically goes up. Mr. Brian Grady can either walk you to that site or we can move forward with this.
Let's just move forward. Okay, it's Gardner.
Yes, so simply put, this is the southern site to the site that Mr. Grady just showed you before. The medical office building, which is state-of-the-art and first-class, has already been constructed here. So this is simply to take away the need to do the buffer on the north side since Herod Properties has subsequently purchased the property to the north.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant waves rebuttal time?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Moreta, before we move into these school concurrences, can we see if the applicant and staff worked out any differences on item E three?
I believe we are ready to move on this item.
Okay.
Item E three, we did speak with the applicant and discussed the potential construction of the road. Where we moved the discussion is that the section that's cited in the staff report as the TS three section, if this road is, the board's inclined to keep the requirement for the road, we would request that that be removed and we could work with the applicant on the standard of construction to not bind it to that specific standard, but to provide some flexibility for cost efficiencies. That being said, I understand that the applicant still has concerns. I'll ask the applicant to speak to that, but I understand that they are still not in agreement with that condition as modified.
Applicant?
Thank you. Michael Horner, fourteen five oh two North Del Maybury Highway, represent the applicant. We had a very constructive, civil, and cordial telephone conference with Mike Williams and staff. Unfortunately, Commissioners, this comes down to time and cost. And we are on the south end of both of those issues, unfortunately. Even if we were allowed to proceed, and this condition was mandated, we would have to go into a extension. As Ms. Hefner advised you, that extension would most likely not be granted. And even if it was, it would delay the project another six months to a year. And we'd be looking at another, I think just the extension charge is $60,000 in addition to the cost that Mr. Couch quoted you. So I love compromise. I've worked my whole life around compromise with staff. Unfortunately, we are not able to accept those conditions today. And we would ask the board to accept the modified conditions that I read into the record. And we tried, Commissioners. We just are unable to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What's your pleasure?
Move approval of the item with the conditions as proposed by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thanks. I would just say that I think with the staff offering to compromise even beyond my own comfort zone with compromising on the design standards and the applicant still sticking where they are, I won't be able to support that. I could support it all the way down to the new compromise that the staff has ordered or agreed to, but I wouldn't be able to support this, the dead-end street with, you know, really no connectivity. The reasons are the same everybody gives. They don't want cut-through traffic and it costs a lot and it makes the project more difficult. So I won't be able to support that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I concur with Commissioner Smith. Obviously, affordable housing is important. It's a priority of this board. But I got to tell you, in my time in office, I don't ever recall an applicant requesting to remove an access condition because they can't afford the project. I admire the candor and honesty. However, it just doesn't sit well. And so I'm going to be unable to support that, the motion, therefore.
Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
Thank you. And this is a tough decision. I do believe in cross-access, but we're talking about 110 units. Not normally where we're talking about 400 units or some really very large number. So I'm going to support the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, Commissioner Obermann, you all can remove your hands if you're done. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to approve item E three. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Miller, Hagan, Kemp, and Smith voted no.
Okay, Mr. Moreta?
Continue this case till the next item, please, and have a regroup discussion with our staff, please.
Excuse me?
This is Michael Horner again. This is dire important. Could we please regroup for just one more discussion of 20 minutes and come right back to you?
Mr. Horner, the body has voted. I don't know what you're going to do to change. You have to get someone that was on the prevailing side to reconsider this motion. If you want to go back out and try to work on it, if we can get a member of this body, this board to reconsider the vote by which it failed, we could do that. But if you want to do that...
Feel the request for that reconsideration vote, just to give us one more shot at discussion of this item.
Well, you had a shot of about 30 minutes.
We now realize that this is not going to be possible. We have to move forward with this. We've asked for that TS three as an option. We did not think that's going to be possible if need be. We have that reluctantly and ask for the reconsideration.
Tell you what you do, Mr. Horner. If you want to go outside and communicate, go ahead. You come back and if there's anyone on the prevailing side that voted no, wishing to move to reconsider the vote by which it's failed, we'll do that. If we don't get that, it's done, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you got your hand up?
Yeah, yes, sir. Real quick, I apologize. I've got to go pick my daughter from school. So I'll be back in probably about 30, 40 minutes. But I also want to say the applicant had ample opportunity to revise their condition. And staff bent over backwards to try to accommodate them and it still wasn't good enough. And now they want to third or fourth buy the apple. So I'm going to impose that if I'm present for any type of reconsideration. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E ten.
Excuse me. Commissioner Hagan, before you leave, can you put your, excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Hagan, if you're still there, can you move your hand, put your hand down, please? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moreta, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're getting into the portion of the agenda where we have school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreements. Mr. Adam Gormly is going to handle this portion of the agenda to the conclusion. So it's been nice meeting with you and we'll see you at the next board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, board members. Items E ten through E twenty-one are all school concurrency proportionate share development agreements. Half of these agreements, items, sorry, E sixteen through E twenty-one, the board heard at last Wednesday's regular BOCC meeting and will be holding the second and adoption public hearing on those six applications. Items E ten through E fifteen are the first public hearings on a new batch of prop share agreements. And these will be scheduled for the adoption public hearing to be held at the September sixteenth BOCC land use meeting. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll run through the items. Each one of these is a public hearing. Item E ten is a school concurrency proportionate share agreement with D.R. Horton as the applicant. This is for the Mangrove Point Phase one, two, and three subdivisions, which consists of 286 single-family attached units. The project will be making a contribution in the amount of $390,425 to construct 14 middle school seats to accommodate the impacts of this project. The second public hearing will be held September sixteenth at 10:00 a.m. This is a public hearing.
Is the applicant here? Would there be an applicant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Elise Batzel with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson.
Have you been sworn in?
Available to answer any questions that you have on this.
Have you been sworn in?
I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the item E ten? Anyone wishing to speak on item E ten? Close the public hearing. We'll come back and discuss this till September sixteenth. Mr. Gormly, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Item E eleven is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with D.R. Horton, Inc. This is for the Mangrove Manor Phase one and two subdivision, which consists of 203 single-family attached units. The project will be making a contribution of $501,975 to construct 18 middle school student stations to accommodate the project's impact. This is a public hearing. The second public hearing will be held September sixteenth at 10:00 a.m.
Applicant?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Miller, Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson. We don't have any further comments at this time, but are available for questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E eleven? Anyone wishing to speak on item E eleven? Close the public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on September sixteenth. Mr. Gormly?
Item E twelve has been continued. I'll move to item E thirteen. This is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with Hillsborough County 301 LLC. This is for the Belmont Multi-Family Project, which consists of 300 multifamily units. The project will be making a contribution of $1,292,126 to construct 35 elementary and 13 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing. The second public hearing will be held September sixteenth at 10:00 a.m.
Applicant? Is the applicant here?
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Commission, Michael Brooks for the...
Have you been sworn in?
Sherpa Roaches, 606 Madison.
Have you been sworn in, Mr. Brooks?
I apologize. I have not been.
Please swear, man.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Proceed, sir. You have fifteen minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't need that much time. We're just here to answer any questions. And I will say I've also signed up for E eighteen and E twenty-one. Unless there are any questions to those ones as well, I will just reserve my time and watch from the back. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E thirteen? Anyone wishing to speak on item E thirteen? Anyone wishing to speak on item E13? Close the public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held September 16th. Mr. Gormley.
Item E14 is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with D.R. Horton, Inc. This is for the proposed Copper Creek Townhomes Project, consisting of 26 single-family attached units. The project will be making a contribution in the amount of $135,451 to construct three elementary and two middle school student stations. This is a public hearing. The second public hearing will be held on September 16th at 10:00 a.m.
The applicant available?
Elise Batzel with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. We're available for any questions. And as Mr. Brooks stated, I am here for E15, E17, E19, and E20. Again, I don't have further comments on those unless you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E14? Anyone wishing to speak on item E14? Close the public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on September 16th. Mr. Gormley.
Item E15 is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with DDFL-South Creek LLC. This is for the South Creek Phase 2 Multi-Family Project, consisting of 363 multi-family units. The project will be making a contribution of $418,313 to construct 15 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing. The second public hearing will be held on September 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, I think the applicant has already been forth. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E15? Anyone wishing to speak on item E15? Let's close the public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on September 16th. Mr. Gormley.
Thank you. I'll move into item E16. The E16 through E21 will all be second adoption public hearings. Item E16 is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with Dune FB Debt LLC. This is for the South Bay, formerly known as Forest Brook subdivision, consisting of 234 single-family attached and 203 single-family detached units. The project will be making a contribution of $808,723 to construct 29 middle school student stations for the project. This is a public hearing, adoption.
Applicant?
Good morning. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida.
Have you been sworn in, sir?
I have been sworn, and I am just here to answer any questions about this.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E16? Anyone wishing to speak on item E16? Hearing none, close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item E16. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley.
Item E17 is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with Eisenhower Property Group LLC. This is for the South Creek Phase 2A, 2B, and 2C subdivision, consisting of 117 single-family detached units. The project will make a contribution of $330,666 to construct nine middle school and three elementary school student stations the to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing.
Applicant?
No further comments, sir.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E17? Anyone wishing to speak on item E17? Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by, who was that, Commissioner Overman?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on item E17.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Gormley.
Item E18 is a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement with CalAtlantic Group, Inc. This is for the Lysse Phase 3 subdivision, consisting of 84 single-family detached units. The project will be making a contribution of $249,659 to construct one elementary and eight middle school students to accommodate the impacts of this project. This is a public hearing.
Applicant? I think the applicant already said something. I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E18? Anyone wishing to speak on item E18? Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item E18. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Gormley.
Item E19 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with Spencer, I'm sorry, Creek Preserve Development LLC. This is for the Creek Preserve Phase 9 subdivision, consisting of 38 single-family detached units. The project will be making a contribution in the amount of $324,027 to build eight elementary and four middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. I think the applicant already has spoken on this. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E19? Anyone wishing to speak on item E19? Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item E19. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes. Sorry.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Gormley.
Item E20 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with Rodine Development LLC. This is for the Belmont Reserve subdivision. The project will be making a contribution in the amount of $1,317,355 to construct 16 elementary and 32 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing.
Applicant, have you speak on this already? Okay, believe it did. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E20? Anyone wishing to speak on item E20? Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item E20. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley.
Commissioners, our last public hearing is item E21. This is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with Hillsborough 301 LLC. This is for the Belmont Townhomes Parcel F subdivision, which consists of 160 single-family attached units. The project will be making a contribution in the amount of $223,100 to construct eight middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. I think the applicant already talked about this. We're going to go into the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item E21? Anyone wishing to speak on item E21? Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Gormley.
Commissioner, that will take us to item K1 on your agenda. This is the first of two school board, school district items. The first item K1 is a request that the board essentially mandate the payment of school district, a school board adopted review fees as part of rezoning and comprehensive plan review applications. The little brief background, the school board recently hired a consultant to identify the costs of services they provide, including reviews of rezoning applications and comprehensive plan amendments. They identified costs per review and adopted a review fee. At the present time, that review fee is not part of the the development services you can schedule, or there's really no tie-in to that. So there's no, there's no interplay between our processing of applications and the payment of that fee. What the school district request before you today is, is to make, is to create that tie-in. Essentially require that any school board adopted review fee be paid before an applicant either rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment moves forward to a hearing. I believe we have Ms. Amber Dickerson on WebEx. In the event she has, would like to add anything to the request, or in the event the board has any questions on this item.
Okay, do we have to vote on this item, Mr. Gormley?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do we need to vote on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the item?
Move the item.
Pardon me?
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman on item K. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Gormley.
Thank you, Board members. The last item today is an off-the-agenda item. This is a presentation by the school district of their five-year work plan and some recent concurrency, school concurrency items that they've identified. It's a brief background for the board. The board, Board of County Commissioners, the school board, and the planning commission have an interlocal agreement amongst us that governs, amongst other things, school concurrency reviews and school siting. As part of that interlocal agreement, the school board sends us each year their tentative five-year facilities work plan that identifies capacity improvements that we've made over the next five years for school sites or school facilities. The counties, per the interlocal agreement, comment on that five-year plan and identify infrastructure and service needs that would be associated with those schools if they were cited. We have recently had some some experience with the school site request that I addressed the board, addressed with the board in June, where there was a challenge with providing the infrastructure for a proposed school site, and that school site was not approved for siting. This is kind of a follow-up to that, I think, for the board's benefit of hearing the plan and what the board, what the school district plan is for facilities in the next five years. What challenges they're experiencing, and hopefully how we can work together with the school board to help meet some of those challenges, which it says is a fast-growing segment of South County. And as has been stated, some challenges that the school district has experienced in citing schools. Would you think that there is an opportunity to look at some sites, some things that the board has recently seen in terms of potential school sites in the county? And we've identified that in our correspondence to the school district staff, and that correspondence is included in the backup for this item, which came with the addendum. So with that, I do also want to highlight a sort of caution about the school board's feeling of being able to continue with proportionate share agreements, like was on the agenda today. And so we asked that that conversation be shared with the board. We do have school district representatives on the line. I believe that we have Ms. Amber Dickerson, perhaps Chris Farkas and Addison Davis, and they have a, I believe, a PowerPoint presentation that they're wanting to make to the board. And so that'll ask if, who is it that we have on the line from the school district to speak to this item?
Hello, this is Amber Dickerson with Hillsborough County Schools. Addison Davis and Chris Farkas will be potentially joining us soon. They are actually in a school board workshop right now.
Okay.
So I will share my screen. Bear with me. Oops. Okay, just to confirm, can you see my screen?
No, ma'am.
How about now?
Okay.
Okay, so we have prepared a PowerPoint for you today. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak with you today. As Adam alluded to on the five-year plan, school siting issues, and where we are with school concurrency. So the outline and objectives for today, we want to go through the five-year plan. We want to talk about school siting, traffic, infrastructure issues, evaluate the critical need for school sites, assess the consequences of no school sites potentially, and discuss the next steps and solutions. So this is a snapshot of our five-year plan. So year one are the schools that actually opened this August. New Sumner High School with a small middle school component, also the new Belmont Elementary School D. Tampa Heights Elementary School, formerly known as Lee Elementary School, which actually unfortunately burnt. And then we are reconstructing it to open January 2020. We're also contemplating the Spoto High School addition, Wy Mama Elementary addition. These are both located in the South County area to absorb new development. We're also building a new PK8 at a dedicated site within the water set development. We are looking at Collins to add in addition. This is contingent upon a property to the north that actually Hillsborough County owns for a park site. So we've been talking to your staff about that potential. And then a new PK8 in Manhattan site, which is in South Tampa. And lastly, a new partially funded high school, which we have slated for the Bishop Road site that has not gone through the full siting process. So this is really just a different way to look at the five-year plan, which is broken up into the different school types, elementary, combination, middle school, and high school. These are project revenues, 1.8 million in funding total. We want to thank all of the voters for supporting our referendum for sales tax revenue of $550 million in a five-year period. We're projecting that really helps us with the deferred maintenance that we have. We're also having 190 million over the five years for new construction. In addition, we use our funds for modular placement. So those overcrowded schools, we place modulators in the interim until we can build a new school. Bus purchases, site purchases are somewhat new as well. Since we did get an increase in impact fee money, we're able to in impact fee money, we're, uh, able to buy more sites. And then lastly, health, life, and safety. So, um, there's a lot going on with this slide, but it represents all of the current possible school sites. Highlighted in blue are the sites reserved with approved plan developments. In orange is the Bishop Road site that we own. And in gray is a site that is under contract for purchase. We recently received the county's review of our district's five-year work plan, so we wanted to take this opportunity to comment. Um, in it, they encouraged us to locate school sites within planned developments. However, there are some challenges with planned development sites, um, that are reserved for schools. First, ownership. We don't own these properties, therefore we must negotiate dedication agreements for each site with developers. If they don't agree to the terms of the price, um, the developer can develop those sites as residential. If the appraised value comes back, um, and the developer does not agree to that, we would need a super majority of our board to vote for any price above the average of two appraisals. Also, timing. These sites are located on substandard roadways or are in the center of undeveloped PD projects. The county has stated they can coordinate with developers for the required infrastructure, but timing is a concern. We need sites now. Also acreage. None of the sites are large enough to accommodate a high school, which requires 50 acres. We have a new high school slated for the fifth year of the five-year plan on Bishop Road, which we own, but is surrounded by substandard roadways. Also desirability. Frequently the sites are not maybe the best quality properties and are not always located in the best locations to serve students. Um, we want to know which is the best PD site in the county's opinion prior to starting the very costly citing process. The traffic study alone for Bishop Road cost the districts and taxpayers $10,000, and we still arrive to have a finding of no consistency. At the end of the day, there are no current sites that have adequate transportation infrastructure to support a school in South County, and that is a problem that we must address. We cannot depend on reserved planned development school sites alone to solve this issue as they have their own challenges and there are not enough locations for those school sites. So how did we get here? Um, the district didn't have enough money through impact fees to build schools or buy property for a very long time. And I want to take a moment to thank you all personally for increasing the school impact fee. This will help us immensely. It's no secret that there is also a transportation infrastructure problem in South County, which is now negatively impacting school infrastructure to serve students that are moving into the area. We are really stuck between a rock and a hard place because we are legally prohibited from using school funds to build non-contiguous roadways, yet we need schools to serve new students. Again, there are no properties in this area that are located on non-substandard roadways. We have no sites to spend the increased impact fee revenue to build new schools. The development community will still be, soon be impacted because without new projects to pay towards, the school district will no longer be able to process mitigation agreements, which translates to approved developments not being able to build. Overcrowding of schools has many negative impacts to students, staff, and the community, and create politically tough issues. We may have to do double sessions, which would mean different grades would have different bell times, which would mean four bus runs per school, which is a nightmare for everyone involved. We must build new schools. Per the Longridge Plan, we need to build at least two schools a year on average to keep pace with growth. By this time next year, we will have to squeeze close to 3,000 new students onto existing campuses that are already overcrowded. We must solve this crisis. We know there's no easy solution to the transportation issue in South County. It all comes down to funding, but we must build new schools. The students from approved developments, which are also located on substandard roadways, are surrounding our Bishop Road property, which is highlighted in the slide. Next steps. As we all know, public education is the foundation of any thriving community. So this is a community issue. We cannot solve this issue by working in silos, and time is truly of the essence. We are suggesting to create a public school citing task force consisting of decision-makers and topic experts listed on the slide. We need to meet frequently so we can get some traction on these issues. I'm confident that the talent and aptitude of this team will have the ability to tackle this most important issue. We have to come up with some creative solutions. Either allow schools to be located on substandard roadways or find funding to develop the transportation infrastructure that is required to support schools. We should not make the decision to force students to attend overcrowded schools because transportation infrastructure is extremely underfunded, which we all know is a massive problem with no solution in sight. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you today. Um, we are here and we are all here because we want, at the end of the day, what's best for our communities. I know we can work together to solve this problem. Our team is here to address any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for this, uh, presentation. Appreciate it. I have been in on some of those meetings, uh, concerning, uh, these issues that you have, and we do appreciate the, uh, the opportunity, uh, for you to be here. Let me ask you a question concerning the, uh, I think it was a committee that you were looking at.
Yes, sir.
When do you, when do you propose that committee coming together? Because what I saw there is you're asking for a county commission to be on there, which would have to come out before our full board. What are you asking for?
As soon as possible, sir. Um, we understand that every board has to have someone, um, elected to that, um, position, so, but at the same time, we need it as soon as possible because the situation is pretty urgent.
Okay, I thought I saw Ms. Wise on here. I do not see her now. She may be gone. Uh, but I'll ask Ms. Wise if she could hear me. Yes, she is on there. Ms. Wise, could you put that on the, uh, our agenda, uh, for our upcoming meeting next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, and I also have talked to, uh, talked to Ms. Dickerson a couple of, in a couple of meetings with, about this issue with, um, uh, different school board members and even the superintendent at, at one point. It is an issue. Uh, Ms. Dickerson, would you please put up that, that slide that showed the location of several, um, school sites you're looking at in South County?
Yes, ma'am.
Get that back up.
Can you see this slide, ma'am?
Well, that, that, that will, that will do. I was looking at one, uh, a couple of slides earlier than that, where you had the, uh, there we go. Okay. And as you talked about the school sites that are listed on this plan, you noted that they all have, uh, problems, but especially now, um, it's number five and number six that are inside, uh, PDs that we've approved, those, those sites, right? And, um...
Yes, actually, all of the blue sites, so one, two, five, and six.
And what happens there is that, um, we, the board of county commissioners, get a rezoning, uh, application that for, you know, 1,000, 1,100 houses in some cases, some of these cases, and it includes the agreement by the school district to say, um, you know, in your comment, well, not you per- well, the school district's comments that you're okay with those developments, given that you're getting this school site. But, um, it now, I mean, clearly, those school sites have a myriad of issues. There, the citing is, uh, uh, not optimal for schools in a lot of ways. They're, uh, on dangerous roads, um, substandard roads. The timing still hasn't been worked out, and the pricing, uh, with the developers, and you may not be able to work that out within the, within the timeframe that's in the, the zoning. But, but given that the school district has signed off on the agreement and said, sure, we can agree to this, uh, if the developer donates or provides, not donates, but, but sells us this land for the school citing, it comes to us, the county commissioners, and, and, and you have commissioners on this board, uh, not only myself, other ones saying, but wait a minute, that doesn't look like a good site for a school. It's on roads that are substandard that would be dangerous for, for, uh, pedestrian and bicycles and, and school students to get to. It's, um, uh, it's, you know, tucked in some odd corner of the development, but, but we're sitting here as commissioners, uh, trying to, um, uh, say the issues with that rezoning that you've just said today, but were not noted at all on the comments. So it's difficult for us to, for us to sort that out here when the developer or the applicant will be saying, but hey, Commissioner, you're, you're, you're listing all these bad issues with these school sites, but we've already worked that out with the school district. So, so that's already agreed to by the district. And I think one thing that we really need is for the school district to be involved in helping us decide whether or not we can afford to put 1,100 houses at where six is and 1,100 houses where five is, given that there is no place to put those children realistically, instead of us getting a comment sheet that says, but don't worry, they're going to dedicate a site that later on, uh, turns into a crisis, that later on turns into a crisis. And if you would just show, uh, the slide, four slides up from, four slides past this, the one you started with, with the Bishop Road site. When these developments came in, the, the one on the south that the, uh, in the pink, when that one came in and these other ones we looked at, um, some of us here on the board, when they came to us, were saying, how are these children going to get to school? Bishop Road is a substandard road. It will be dangerous to put children and bicycles and all this extra traffic on that, those substandard roads. But again, uh, the applicant can sit here and say, but the school district signed off on it. They're fine with it in their comments. And so I think part of our problem is that we need to look at the process by which we decide to put all these houses and students out there and then figure out the school citing later. And, and, um, I would ask the school district, as, as, and I know I've discussed this with, uh, uh, Mr. Davis, and I'm happy to see him being able to join us here today, to, to, help in your comments to, um, let us know ahead of time that a crisis will be looming if we put this many students here, here and there, uh, with these substandard roads and substandard school sites that you're not going to be able to use, so that we can, um, uh, look at those comments and understand what it is we're being asked to approve, uh, and what problems will be coming up now, before we're in a crisis situation. Thank you.
Okay, may I respond?
Yes, Ms. Dickerson, go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I appreciate your comments. I understand where you're coming from. Um, however, there are no non-standard, non, non-standard, substandard roadways, so there are no roadways that we can find, locate property in South County that can support a school site. So that's, that's one big issue. So let's say we did say in the rezoning, you know, yes, we want the property. Obviously, we don't want to leave ourselves with no options at all, um, but no matter what in this area, there are no roads that are standard in which we can build. So that presents a challenge. Additionally, we have historically not recommended denial of any rezoning application because the concurrency system and the way that it's structured right now allows developments to move through the process, and concurrency is triggered at preliminary plat level. So I think there is an opportunity to reevaluate the way that the concurrency system is structured moving forward in order to bring those more difficult conversations, um, up earlier in the process. But right now, the school board really doesn't have that kind of leverage in how the system is structured right now. Also, developers are not required to dedicate school sites in zonings, rezoning applications. So the district request on any larger applications, if we may have a school site, the developer does not have to agree to that condition, and they are still allowed to move forward. So, so that's an issue too. And the, and you're right, that could be addressed probably with different comprehensive plan language and different land development code language. But the way it is written now, we really don't have much leverage to say, no, we want a school site here, specifically right here. And even if we did, like I stated before, none of these new PDs that have been approved have standard roadways within or adjacent to the school sites. So I really do appreciate your comments, and I think that that is where this school citing task force could really take action upon, is to make sure that this system works for all parties involved and that we have these difficult conversations earlier in the process.
Okay, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Dickerson, for your presentation. Um, as you know, and, or may or may not know, but I'm a passionate supporter of pedestrian and bicycle safety, and either through the, the safe routes to school or for Vision Zero, what your, your comments and concerns are, are well, uh, heard. But I know we have to do this proactive approach and collaborative approach, so I'm, I'm glad to see that you're bringing forward a task force. But it does need to address the concerns you have about the steps for preparat- for approval when it comes to concurrency. We have to have, um, a, a better partnership with the school board, uh, for assuring that we don't, as we already have, develop beyond the capacity of, of your five-year plan. For example, the highest capacity projections appear for middle schools in South County, especially Shields Middle School, which is projected to be at 179% capacity within the next five years. However, outside of PK through magnet, uh, PKH Magnet School on the five-year plan in South County near Apollo Beach, it appears that this has not been addressed in your plan. So, uh, other than the challenges associated with continual growth in that area and the fact that we have substandard roads, how are we going to address the compat- capacity issues for our middle schools, given that they're not within your plan that I could see?
Well, actually, one of the sites that we do have and own is the Bishop Road site. So, like, like I alluded to in one of the slides, for a long time, we did not have the for a long time, we did not have the ability to be very aggressive in seeking out new properties for new schools because really, the impact fee represented about half of the actual student station costs. So the district actually went into about $1 billion worth of debt over that time period in order to keep pace with growth. So now that we do have more funds available to us, we do seek out to buy new properties. So Bishop Road was one of the properties that we took the initiative to purchase. In addition, we have another property of 100 acres that would fit a high school or a combination of middle school and elementary. And we have engaged a broker to actively look for any school sites in this area. So I feel like it's addressed in our plan as much as possible. However, we do have to go through the school siding process through the interlocal agreement, which the county has to sign off on basically any school site that we proposed. One of the major components of that review is the transportation infrastructure. So let's say we did have, and we procured five very large sites in this area. We will not be able to develop those unless they can be located on standard roads, which do not exist right now. So our staff is fully motivated on building schools. We want to spend these new impact fees. We are engaging every possible avenue to seek out school sites. But at the end of the day, if there's not transportation infrastructure in place, we will be unable to open new schools.
Okay.
Chairman, a follow-up with a question?
Very short. We've got a lot more than just the Commissioner.
Okay, understood. So are you suggesting that maybe coordination between our transportation department and our tip be necessary for any future school siding in order to facilitate the need to address our financing of infrastructure in those areas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize briefly, please.
I don't know how brief to be, but you know, it's interesting. It's interesting that for the first time ever, this has been called a crisis. And I've really thought it's been a crisis ever since I became a commissioner. And it's very frustrating to look at this. And I think it's really indicates that the system's broken and there has very obviously been years of, more than a decade of fiscal recklessness and planning around this. In the case of the impact fees, I worked very hard outside to try to get the momentum going. And unlike the usual, we had had an increase in our school impact fees since 2006. Counties all over had them every three years and they were caught up. We have been starved for, or the school system's been starved for the money to do this as well. We've been starved in our mobility fees for the money to do proper construction sidewalks, infrastructure throughout this county and have not planned for it and have not designed it. And we're so far behind the eight ball that it's, well, as you termed it a crisis, I called it a crisis, I think it was a crisis many years ago. And yet, we find ourselves in this position. So I'd say our current system of how we're working this, and I'm not sure what the particulars should be, but I cannot believe that other places do not do a better job of coordinating, working and planning how they will cite schools. I realize we have these tremendous growth pressures here, which I think we needed to have responded to those way sooner than this. And I agree, we need places for kids to go to school. We need safe places for them to walk to school and infrastructure around it. I'm very interested in how this will go forward. I'm not sure, you know, what things we have to change in our comprehensive plan, in our process to accommodate this. I think a committee talking about it and learning about perhaps other ways we can do this better would be a good start. But it looks as if we're in a world of hurt. Then it doesn't surprise me at all. And we have only just started to address this now. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of rolling up our sleeves for the next decade or two if we want to do anything reasonable to accommodate what is hitting us now.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Sorry, okay. All the comments have been said, so I'll make this very quick. You know, we've always been very supportive of the school district. This is an age-old problem. Commissioner Miller will remember this, going back to days in the legislature. Hillsborough County has always been behind, playing catch-up on school capacity. And so the only issue, I think the committee will be good for process. But if you're talking about committee getting together to talk about asking us for transportation dollars, I mean, we don't have it. I mean, we're waiting on the Supreme Court to act. And if that goes through, hallelujah, that will help. If it doesn't, we're going to be back in front of the voters in two years. And you're still not going to have the funding you need right away. So if the committee is being put together because you're going to demand infrastructure dollars for transportation, I think you need to seriously look at the situation we're in here in Hillsborough County going forward. Because I just, I'm like, I'm kind of confused that we're still the dog wagging, you know, chasing its tail. And why have we gotten to this point? And you all, of course, have successful school tax pass. We haven't gotten the luxury of that happening here in Hillsborough County yet. So, thank you.
Okay, I see the superintendent on. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Sorry that I was tardy. I was with the board, the board working on policy this morning, but being able to transition. And thank you, Amber, for making the presentation. And overall, we just want to, you know, I'm coming in the middle of this movie related to our past relationship about identifying locations, determining funding, infrastructure. But as everyone said, I think that every commissioner said it beautifully, that it definitely is a, you know, a time where it's a major concern. We are exploding at the South County perspective with 31 schools in the next 15 years. And as Amber spoke about, you know, the substandard roads are everywhere within the communities. But I think that everyone being at the table to be able to do, to problem-solve, decision-make and really work in concert to be able to discuss what we can and cannot accomplish related to our, you know, our capacities at our schools, I think would allow us to move forward in a more efficient manner. You know, back to, you know, Commissioner Merman said, you know, I wish we had that Dollar Tree to be able to pull through it for the infrastructure. We know it doesn't exist and I agree completely with Commissioner Kemp that saying that this definitely is a crisis. But everyone said it so very well today. We thank you. You have full accessibility to our staff, including me, to be a part of that, you know, a part of this process. So whatever we can do to define what the task force roles and responsibilities would be and what inclusive measure that will entail, we're all in to make sure that we are working a singular goal to continue to help this community. I think this is a beautiful problem to have from a community perspective where individuals are trying to transition to Hillsborough County and because it is a really neat, special place. But we've got to make certain that we're working in, you know, in unison related to strategic mapping for particular locations. And but we're here to support this process and whatever time and whomever you may need, we're here to help for us to move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Dickerson, for your presentation today. We look forward to having a member of our board to serve on that committee and see if we can work things out for the betterment of this community. We all know that we've got to educate our kids and regardless, they're coming. And we have to do what we possibly can and we'll work everything out with that, okay? Thank you both for being here. We appreciate it very much. Okay, Mr. Gormly.
That concludes our agenda today with the exception of any additional discussion.
Mr. Gormly, hold on a minute. Commissioner Smith, you have some more comments?
Yes, very brief. Yes, we all agree it's a crisis. And while we are looking for solutions, and I'm hearing that's going to take a while, putting together a committee and everything, while we're looking for solutions, I suggest we stop making the problem any worse. And I would ask the school district to help us in that regard to provide comments that allow us to evaluate future zonings that would add to the problem before we have solutions. So we can consider that as part of our zoning process. Thank you.
Mr. Gormly.
Yes, Commissioners, that concludes our agenda and our discussion on the school items. In the event the board would like to take back up E3, I believe that's the only item that is potentially unaddressed. If not, our agenda is clear.
Is there any commissioner that was on the prevailing side wanting to vote to reconsider E3?
Commissioner Kemp?
Commissioner Kemp what?
I would like, before I vote, is there, do we know that there's been a, you know, I would only consider re-supporting it if I find that they are willing to accept the conditions.
Mr. Horner, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Question, I'm Michael Horner for the record. Commissioners, I just want to let you know that I've been in this business for 40 years and I don't know if I've been in this position before. If this was not affordable housing development, get-rate development, that condition would not have been an issue. We would have readily agreed to it. So I am not the developer. I am only the representative. The conditions that we had before you were very difficult to accept. We have modified one of those. I am also advising you that your denial on condition 1.1, which was a change in the floor plan layout, actually requires us now to go back and redesign all of the building architectural plans. So condition 1.1 is almost as important as condition 11. I stand humbly before you, Commissioners, we are willing to accept a modified condition 11 per Mr. Williams' acknowledgement. I believe Mr. Gormly spoke to you on that prior. If we could eliminate, consistent with the county's typical section TS3, and they give us enough relief to try to get through that road construction process. Again, this is a private-public partnership. Our units are cut down to 104, so you might as well amend condition 1 to delete 120 and insert 104, but we will accept that modified condition. We have to move forward. This is an important project. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? Anything further before we adjourn?
I would make a motion to reconsider.
There's a motion by Commissioner Kemp to reconsider the vote by which E3 failed. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner White. Any discussion? Seeing none, please. Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, unmute yourself.
What is the motion? What, what things are in or out?
The motion is, the motion is, the only thing we're doing is making a motion. The motion was made to reconsider the vote by which E3 failed, which means that motion passed. We go back and discuss E3 again. If the motion fails, we're done.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to, by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner White, to consider the vote by which E3 failed. Understand? Mr. Hagan, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to oppose the reconsideration. The applicant's representative had an opportunity to accept the revised condition by staff. They rolled the dice, so I'm going to oppose the reconsideration.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please call the roll to reconsider the vote by which E3 failed. That's what we're voting on. Please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Miller, Hagan and Smith voted no.
We're now back on E3. What's your pleasure?
I may have approval, second conditions as proposed by the applicant.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White, to approve E3 with the conditions that the applicant accepted. Commissioner Smith, you recognize briefly.
So the motion is not for the conditions that the applicant accepted. The motion that Commissioner Merman is making is for the original motion. Oh, okay, I get it. Sorry. With the applicant's conditions. I won't be able to support that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Yeah, I'll just say I won't be able to support that either since it was made with the original, with the applicant. I'm sorry, I didn't, I want to know that it will be the staff's conditions.
Okay.
Commissioner, what I can offer is that we had initial conditions recommended by staff with the applicant's requested condition. Following the board's adjournment, we had a revised condition that we'd be willing to, that we would be able to accept that removes the reference to the county's typical TS3 section. And that will give some flexibility with providing for the design of the roadway. If that's what the intent of the board's motion is, that would be the change in the conditions. It would still require the construction, but provide greater latitude on how that roadway section gets constructed.
Commissioner Kemp, your hands up. You recognize.
Yes, I just wanted that clarification from staff, that we will have that connectivity and that there, that there will be, that the conditions will be simply that the staff will look at helping to, to look at how they can possibly make this more affordable connection, what they could do.
Ma'am, so then the condition 10 would remain as included in the staff report. Condition 12 would remain as proposed in the staff report. And condition 11 would be modified to keep the requirement to construct, but remove the reference to the typical section TS3. Yes, ma'am.
And what implications, may I just ask? What implications could that have in terms of the road?
It will give some flexibility on the design, whether it's the shoulders, whether it's the road, whether it's the lane width. It won't, it won't hold it specifically to the design with no room for flexibility. Of course, whenever we look at these deviations from typical section construction, we'll never move forward with approving or recommending anything that is unsafe, that provide perhaps some different flexibility on the design to account for the fairly short roadway segment in the area it's traversing.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
I just have one quick question to the applicant. Are you accepting what the staff has just proposed?
We are, Commissioner. We will be building this roadway connection on Giddens. We are just asking for flexibility by the modified TS3 to allow a rural section versus an urban section, a modified section that assists us on the stormwater. We agree to construct that road.
Okay, so everybody's on the same page here, right? Staff, the applicant, everybody's on the same page. Okay, so when I made my motion, it was to accept the conditions as proposed by the applicant, which is he is in agreement with staff and those are the conditions we are actually accepting right now.
That's what I wanted.
That's correct. Is that correct? Everybody's correct, though, ma'am? Okay, just want to make sure.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
That answered my question. I wanted to get some clarification and possibly offer a substitute to what she just suggested. So I'm good where it sounds like staff and the applicant have come to some agreement in providing a compromise.
in providing a compromise to be able to create some level of access. The question still is whether or not it's a TS3 type of road, but there will be some road put into place in order to create access to Broadway. And with that, that's why I wanted to offer the clarification as well as the second, so I'll stop there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor. Seeing no further discussion on the motion, please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Miller and Hagan voted no.
Mr. Gormley, is any further business to come before today on land use?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I do have one other item, a housekeeping item. This relates to some, three pending comp plan amendments that the board has that have associated rezonings with them. These hearings are not scheduled to come at the same time to the board, and we'd like the board's authority to schedule both the comp plan amendments and the zoning amendments together as part of the November 10th land use meeting. And these amendments are CPA 20-01, 20-02, and 19-06. We do not anticipate, and coordinated with Melissa Zornita with the Planning Commission, do not anticipate needing to have those as evening public hearings, and for logistical purposes, request the board's authorization to hold those as part of the November 10th land use meeting.
Moving Mr. Gormley's recommendation.
Is it, second by, who was that?
Merman.
Second by Commissioner Merman, any discussion? Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
What are those complex amendments, briefly, that we would be agreeing to hold in the daytime rather than the usual evening times?
Yes, Commissioners, I believe one of them is on Steerwood 92. It's a small existing youth, I believe the other two are small-scale amendments. If you give me a moment, I can pull up.
Mr. Gormley, I can assist you with that, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. The other two, the other two amendments are also small-scale amendments. One is the 2001, which is located in the Lake Tenota Sasa area, that's a request to go to light industrial, and then there's another one on County Line Road on the eastern part, also a small-scale amendment requesting to go to, I believe, light industrial, that's also a small-scale amendment.
I don't understand why we would change the process, which has always been evening use to allow citizen participation. Why are we asking to change the process for just these three rather than go along with the typical process?
The Commissioners, the request is due to the related zoning applications. The related zoning applications would typically be heard in the day, and we felt that the substance of those applications, being their small scale, would be addressed thoroughly through the zoning application. You know, if the board is more comfortable holding these as in a separate evening hearing, we could move the zoning to that, but we thought that, in the interest of time, it was, we would not lose any significant interest of parties in either of these opportunities to participate if we held them as part of the land use meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Mr. Gormley.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, adjourns the land use meeting. We're now moving to the Board of County Commissioners workshop. Mr. Garcia?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, good morning. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. We have two items to make a brief, we have a brief presentation on two items that are part of our July cycle. These items will be going before the Planning Commission at their regular hearing on October 12th, and are tentatively scheduled to go before this body for transmittal consideration as each one of them exceeds 10 acres on October 22nd. So that will be a transmittal hearing that will be coming back to this body on that date. Without any further ado, I'm going to let Mr. Will Augustine make his presentation on the first one, which is HC CPA 20-15.
Mr. Augustine, you recognize.
Good morning, Commissioners, Will Augustine, Planning Commission staff. One moment, please. I assume you can see my PowerPoint presentation?
No, sir, we can't see it.
Mr. Augustine, this is Mr. Brewer. Would you like me to share it on your behalf, sir?
All right, let's go ahead and do that, please.
Just to confirm, this is dash 15?
That's correct.
You are up.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, excuse me, good morning, Commissioners, Will Augustine, Planning Commission staff. The first item before you is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20-15. Next slide, please. This amendment is located in north-central Hillsborough County along Mango Road, just north of Martin Luther King Boulevard. It's located in the urban service area. Next slide, please. The subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in north-central Hillsborough County, which is approximately 19.5 acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding area is predominantly single-family homes. Land use of residential four, residential six, residential nine predominate the area. Subject property is north of Mango Road, which is also County Road 579, and the Martin Luther King Boulevard intersection. US Highway 92 and Interstate 4 are to the north, Interstate 75 is to the west, and Taylor Road is to the east. Next slide, please. The subject site has an adopted public quasi-public land use classification. The large public quasi-public parcel immediately to the south is Mango Elementary School. The areas along Mango Road include public quasi-public, park and recreational, and residential uses. Areas along Martin Luther King Boulevard are mixture of office, commercial, and residential uses. Residential four, residential six, and residential nine are the predominant land uses of the surrounding properties. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting a residential nine land use change. Next slide, please. The currently adopted land use classification of public quasi-public doesn't allow dwelling units on a 19.5 acre site. With a land use change to residential nine, subject site would have a potential build-out of up to 175 dwelling units. Suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to a build-out of 175,000 square feet or floor-to-air ratio of .50. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, I see no questions at this time. Mr. Garcia?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. So that, that land was public because it was part of the school?
No, ma'am. It is currently being used as St. Francis CC Catholic Church. There's a church there, and then there is a rectory building, which is apart from it.
And the applicant is the church, then, selling the land?
No, ma'am. What they would like to do is build senior dwelling units for parishioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Garcia, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final item for your consideration at this morning's briefing is HC CPA 20-16 by Ms. Krista Kelly. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, you recognize.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2016. I direct you to the aerial on the title page. The site initially, when applied for, came in as two parcels totaling 221.6 acres. Sunset time and post the delivery of your packet, the applicant has requested the deletion of the lower portion of the site, which is approximately 30 acres. So it's the upper northern portion of the site. I'm sorry, it's not moving.
Ms. Kelly, take your mouse to the bottom left corner, there's the arrows.
Thank you. This is a location map showing CPA 2016, just east of Tampa. It's in the rural service area, and it's also within the boundary of the East Orient Park Community Plan. Again, it is east of Tampa and it's southeast of Temple Terrace. It's approximately a third of a mile north of I-4 and is bounded to the east by I-75 and to the west by the Tampa Executive Airport. This aerial shows the site, and you can see the airport to the west, and I-75 and I-4. Again, the site was modified from the 221 acres to now 191 acres, the 30 acres being removed. And also a portion of the larger parcel that extends across I-75 was not included in the application, and it's not shown on this depiction, it's not delineated, but I wanted to point that out. EPC pointed out that there, and the applicant pointed out, that there is wetlands on that northern parcel. The assessment has not been completed at this time, and approximation is somewhere between 50 and 70 acres of wetlands. Currently, the site is agricultural, and it is surrounded by a rural community to the south and to the east, and then you can see the intensity increasing towards the airport, and then as it reaches Tampa, much more intense. Currently, the site's designated residential one, as is the surrounding area to the south and east. The airport and those accessory facilities that support the airport and warehousing to the west are designated public quasi-public. South of I-4, the area is predominantly designated community mixed-use twelve. The applicant's requesting a change to light industrial planned. The impact of this change, currently 191 units would be allowable, and up to 30,000 square feet or .25 FAR. LIP eliminates residential use of the property and allows an FAR of .75, which would equate to approximately 6.2 million square feet of non-residential uses. However, in staff's brief and cursory assessment, the typical build-out of LIP is somewhere in the realm of 8% of the site, and that greatly reduces the potential industrial development. Again, this is speculation, but typically it might build out to 915 plus or minus 1,000 square feet. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I see, Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it, and thank you for your presentation. Quick question, so if I understood you correctly, the portion to the left side of the project between the airport and the blue, you know, portion of the portfolio, that to the, to the left of it, or to the west of it, that's actually zone residential one all the way up to the airstrip?
This, the light yellow is residential one.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the remaining portion of the yellow to the west of that, that's not part of this particular project. Is that residential one as well?
It is designated residential one, that little cutout.
Seriously? Okay. Just, how does that happen? How do we put an airstrip on residential one zoning land? But that question is, so they cut out the south, the southern portion of that little L down there, correct? Is that what you suggested?
That is a good question, and that is something that I can investigate and request an explanation from the airport. I believe that is under their ownership. I don't know if Mr. Garcia might want to weigh in on this. To my knowledge, it is part of the Tampa Executive Airport.
I can answer both of those questions for you, Commissioner Overman, very quickly, if I may, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. So the parcel to the left, which is not part of the plan amendment, is indeed owned by, that's correct, is owned by the Aviation Authority. As to why it's residential one, we're still conducting some research on that. We have had preliminary conversations in the pre-application conference with the applicant regarding this, but of course, that's not within their purview, so we're continuing to conduct research as to why this property was not correctly redesignated public quasi-public. So we're in that process so that you know that. And yes, you are correct that the L piece on the southern part of the original subject site is the parcel, yes, is the parcel that has been requested to be removed from consideration for the plan amendment request.
Okay, so in line of that, thank you. So this portion to the south is going to remain residential one, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and then access to this, the rezoned light industrial planned would be from the, on the southern border, from access through Eureka Springs Road, and then take a right on whatever that is to access it, or are there other access points to that particular property? Because obviously, 270, oh, 75 is not one.
Yeah, there is Falkenburg Road here accesses the larger parcel.
Okay.
Although it is, it is a small, two-lane road.
How about to the west? Is there more access to the west, even though they're carving out that one piece? Will there be a secondary or other access points?
There is an airport road that is part of the airport project, or the airport facility, but they don't designate that as access to the site, and it's a little bit premature as there is no site plan to determine what the access points are, but they are limited at this time.
Okay, I'm just curious, because obviously 75 is to, and the airport's to the north and the west, there's not much other than the south available to access an industrial spot, and everything to the south of it appears to be residential one, or is zoned that way. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, all right. And do we? Okay, I'm just curious, because obviously 75 is to, and the airport's to the north and the west, there's not much other than the south available to access an industrial spot. And everything to the south of it appears to be residential one, or is zoned that way. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, all right. And do we, any understanding of what the intent is for this particular project?
There is a, I do believe that there is a PD, there is a PD that has been submitted, a companion PD that has been submitted for this site. Of course, in the plan amendment review process, that's not for, anything for us to take into consideration. I do believe that it is for some, there's a track that's supposed to be for vehicle use to the north of the site, and then there will be some, there are a couple of other ancillary uses that are proposed along with the site, which include garages, and which also includes some kind of armored center. Those are getting into the nuances of the rezoning that we are not really, it's not really appropriate to bring that forward at this juncture, but there is Commissioner APD that is, that has been submitted for the site.
Okay, great. That answers my questions. I was just curious about the access to an industrial site through a residential zone area, and that was, that was the purpose of my question. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. What are the utilities there? Water and sewer outside the urban service area?
I understand that the airport is served by the City of Tampa Utilities. I don't think the site has access to potable water. Again, as Tony pointed out, we're in the process of assessing all of this information and getting comments back from the agencies, and I don't have that at this point to confirm one way or another, but I will get that to you.
What, what was that?
If I may add on, Commissioner Smith, we're in the process of getting comments back from the reviewing agencies, which have not been concluded yet. Sometimes that happens in the timing aspect. So regarding your question, that, that information, to the degree of specificity that we would require from a comp plan aspect, we haven't received that yet. And as I have also stated, Development Services does have a PD that has been submitted also for development review, which is going to be at a greater degree, and will answer the questions that you're, you're asking about. Now, once we get this information, as it becomes available to us, we can most certainly provide it to all the commissioners contemporaneously regarding issues along that line. As far as what Ms. Kelly has stated, potable water is not available because it is in the rural service area. The Tampa Executive Airport does have access with the Tampa service area to the west, and I believe that the applicant is in negotiations or talks to try and access that as well. And that is about as far as I know regarding this particular potential use of those types of facilities. Again, we'll note to a greater degree, once the rezoning comes in again, on that particular portion of the, of the land use change process, instead of the to quote process.
Here's, here's something you won't hear me say very often, is it seems like this might be a place to consider expanding the urban service area boundary. That's all I'll offer for the comp plan. Thank you.
Okay. I see no further hands at this time, and anything further to come before us, Mr. Garcia?
No, sir. That concludes our presentations.
With that, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a great day, everybody.
Have a good afternoon.